Applause. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with the regime of justice for all.
Okay, roll call please Pam.
Mayor Graventer.
Here.
Alderman Couch. Alderwoman Zerwick.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Okunfus.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderwoman Broomfield.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval agenda?
Motion for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, just want to say before we start that I had a lot of feedback the last couple weeks from our last meeting and comments that were made at the last meeting and headlines in the newspaper and none of it was positive so I just, I don't think anything that came out of that meeting helped this board and I'll just leave it at that. So with that, I think Eric, you have a person you'd like to introduce?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to introduce our new officer. This is Gregory Reviss. He comes originally from northern Illinois around Chicago, moved to Missouri, went to the police academy at southeast Missouri and is living down around Cape now so I wanted to give him the opportunity to say hi and for you guys to get to meet him so if you have any questions, this is Gregory.
Welcome.
Glad to have you.
Okay, thank you guys. Martin, go on your report.
Oh, push that again.
We don't have that dude.
We've got the calendar.
Oh, I'm on a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong piece of paper. Alright. Okay, at this point Jeff Schroeder from our accounting firm, auditing firm is here tonight to answer any questions. You all have a copy of the audit and Jeff?
Good evening. I will try to be brief this evening. I recognize most of the faces. I believe most of you have heard this presentation before. I find that this year's audit was a very routine audit from our perspective. We had a fairly easy time with performing our procedures. Everything worked fairly much the way we expected. Our report that you've got in front of you starts out with an explanation of the responsibility of the financial statements rests with the city and that my responsibility as the auditor is to issue an opinion on whether or not those financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with accounting principles. And it goes on to explain what standards we adhered to while we were conducting our audit. It goes on to explain that the city prepares their financial statements on the modified cash basis, which is a departure from generally accepted accounting principles but is more commonly used with smaller entities in the state of Missouri. It goes on to explain that it is our opinion that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with the modified cash basis. It goes on to explain that there's some supplementary information that's included in the report that's in addition to the basic financial statements and that we have applied procedures to those statements as well and that we also believe that they are fairly stated in relation to the financial statements. It also explains that we've conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. There's a separate report that's included to discuss those matters. To conduct an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we have to obtain enough of an understanding of how the internal controls work over how the financial information is put together to be able to prepare financial statements. We have to have an understanding of how that all works to be able to properly plan and conduct the audit. We don't actually issue an opinion on those internal controls, but in accordance with those standards, if we find anything that we would consider to be either a significant deficiency or a material weakness, we would report them to you in this report. The report goes on to explain that we did not find any weaknesses that we were required to report. Also in accordance with those standards, we're looking at the city's compliance with various laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements, anything that's financial in nature and that we also had no instances of non-compliance to be reported. So this is basically an unqualified opinion or the new terminology is an unmodified opinion now. It's a clean opinion and that's the one that everybody's looking for. The financial statements themselves, I usually don't spend much time going over those because I know you're familiar with the financial statements, reviewing the financial reports as you go throughout the year. My recollection was we had very few adjustments that we proposed during the course of our work that those financial statements were materially in line before we even started our work. So I know that's why you're familiar with those numbers already. Then like I said, the remainder of the report is the supplementary schedules, is a lot of more detailed information about how those numbers were developed and the very interesting reading. Normally at the end of the report is where we would have our findings and recommendations and suggestions and this year we have none to report. So that makes my job a little bit easier at this time of the audit. Like I said, it was from our perspective a very routine audit. Things went very smoothly and that's the nutshell version of what's in that report. You know, I'd like to go into more detail if anybody has any questions about the report. But, or if anybody just has any questions about what we were doing while we were here or how the audit progressed, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
I just think we're very fortunate to have Sue on our staff. The way her name goes and she...
Sue is a big part of the work that we're dealing with as well as several others with the city, but she makes our job a lot easier and I like to pass that on when that's the case, when my clients make our job easier. I don't say that just because of the fact that, you know, I obviously like it when my job's easier, but it creates accountability for the city on how the money's been handled and that's the ultimate goal. My job's easier if you have accountability. So, and the accountability is what the ultimate goal is.
Jeff, since we've been doing this for several years and been doing so good, don't we, shouldn't we get a discount?
I'll talk to the senior partner about that.
Since it makes your job so much easier.
Don't give me a discount when I get my hair cut. Same argument. Less hair.
Any questions, anybody? Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
That was very well said Sue, we get a nice job and everybody else, Martin, Pam and the rest of the staff. I know everybody gets involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Jeff. Okay. Martin, your turn.
Okay. I attend on the board of the regional solid waste district and I report to you from time to time the meetings that I go to and what transpires. Before last, I was approached by a citizen who expressed concern over the fact that you know they're no longer making or marketing incandescent light bulbs and that every bulb we now buy will either be a compact fluorescent LED or whatever technology is down the road. Concern had to do with disposal of the compact fluorescent because they contain some mercury. It's, I don't think that there's consensus on how much and how dangerous it is, but I know that the retailers, the large retailers, Lowe's and Home Depot and such are doing a trade-in probably bringing them in for recycling and that Ameren is making recycling of those bulbs part of their program in the cities in the St. Louis area. So I spoke to the county commission and we talked about whether we could go, find out what is involved in this and approach the solid waste district perhaps in their next grant cycle, which is next year, about purchasing whatever is needed in order to have a recycling program for those bulbs over the years. Emailed Citizens Electric to see if they have any intention of undertaking a program similar to that which Ameren is and I think with, and we talked to a board member at the recycling center about their participation. I think long-term making, if the retailers do or can't or, I think it's in the interest of everyone that we facilitate the recycling of these bulbs. So I'll let you know what comes out of that. Really getting anything for you to act upon, but it's going to require cooperation among various parties. With your approval, we applied for an engineering design grant with MoDOT to design the water sister improvements which we've already covered and for which you have approved retaining Cochran. We have not executed that contract because we became aware of the fact that grant funds might be available. Contract that's executed before a grant is awarded is not eligible for funding. Cochran has worked with us on submitting this grant and we were informed this week that the city is eligible for funding and we will be given some consideration although the amount of the award hasn't been revealed. The, you know, there's a pot of money so big and so many people wanting it and the director of the department has to decide how to allocate it. So, but that's, nice to know, something that we needed to do and we were going to pursue is going to be done with some assistance through state grant funding. We had the first meeting of the Landmark Committee that's going to look at the codes and the design guidelines. Alderman Ross was there and the mayor was there. I don't want to speak for them, so I'm going to let them and Shawna was there. I'm going to let the mayor speak about what happened.
Well, I think it was a good start, good first meeting. A lot of ideas were thrown out there along with Shawna and Teddy. Frank Roth, the president or the chairman of Landmarks was there and also Frank Myers, who's a member of Landmarks. I think we got some good ideas out. There will be some change. We're going to meet again here in another week and to try to start narrowing some of those ideas down. There will be some changes to Landmarks ordinance, I feel, or that, anyway, that that committee I'm sure will suggest to this board. Can't really say exactly what those will be yet, but I, it will, we want to try to make the process easier for people and that's the goal of it and really try to focus on the intent. My plan is to really focus on the intent of what the Landmarks ordinance or what I believe it stands for and what it is there to protect. So again, we've got another meeting a week from tomorrow and I hope by sometime within the next maybe one or two meetings, we would have it finalized and be able to bring some suggestions to this board. Take them to, I'm sure we'd like to take them to the Landmarks Committee first or Landmarks Commission first and then to this board, but I, some good ideas out there and I think we can make some positive changes.
You recall that we approached the insurance company on the street department building about some additional electrical work. The caustic gas from the fire is causing erosion in the area that we otherwise thought was not damaged, the office area, and they recommended that we rewire that. I sent the report to the insurance company. They agreed that that would be an eligible expense. So that work is underway and should be finishing up here pretty soon. The good news is that as of today, it appears that the insurance company is going to reimburse us for everything but our $2,500 deductible. There were, as you recall, some questions about, well, and $700 for upgrading the infrared heaters to make them a two-stage heater instead of just a one-stage heater. I'm pleased to report that. We had some concerns that, because we didn't replace it exactly as it was when it was damaged, that there might be some chargebacks, but they're not doing that. So we're going to get, going to get insurance payment for everything we've done. I reported at our last meeting that we had approval for the funds for the trail in Parkwood and that the engineer reported that they would be in the field this week to start the surveying work, weather permitting. I don't, I've been over there today to see if they got there yesterday because I was at another place, but I will report next. The cold may have prevented them from doing it. I don't know that, but they're prepared to get it done as soon as the weather will allow. When you receive grant funds from MoDOT these days, they require you to attend certain educational programs so that you cannot say after you've received the money and spent it that you didn't know what you were supposed to do or how you were supposed to do it. And there's processes that they have established that you have to follow. So you have to get certified in local public agency funding, which I am, and then they hold other training programs along the way that you need to attend. And since this project involves right-of-way acquisition, I attended a mandatory training program for that today and that's why I didn't know if the surveyors got there because I was at this training program. As you may imagine, because of the amount of snow we've had, we used up all of our salt. Dave's going to cover that probably better in his report than I can, but we're certainly going to be over budget in that line item, which we will report to you. We'll have a session to do the budget amendments that, after the smoke clears. We had to rewater salt. Our supplier, the supplier that had the low bid when we bid this out, didn't have any and wasn't going to get any for a month. Well, we couldn't not have any, so we started checking around for other sources, checked with other cities to see who their suppliers were. And we contacted each of those suppliers and there was only one that had any salt was willing to deliver it to us and it's at a price that's, as I said, 55% higher than what was bid. We had $55 a ton when we didn't need it. Now that you need it, it's $84 a ton. The $55 a ton was delivered, this has a delivery charge for each truck. So we're getting salt, we'll have salt. It's coming at a premium, but it's the kind of thing you have to do and they certainly take advantage of you when they can, so.
Alright, thank you staff. Port Sandra, you're first.
Before Sandra starts, I put at your table this letter from Linda Wagner. I don't intend to discuss it or cover it tonight, I just wanted you to have it. She's basically asking for assistance with her legal defenses for people who are appealing their taxes. All I know about it is what I read in the letter, as you now have it. I will meet with her, we'll talk about it, I'll find out kind of the more details in the order of magnitude and I'll bring it back when I have more information. It's not an item that we budgeted, so I've got to figure out what it is first.
Okay, well, good evening everyone. You have in front of you a few sheets that we were able to pull because we have finished up our calendar year data and it's, you know, if you're into data, it's kind of exciting to see the whole year laid out there. As you can see, well, as you know, December was just a wretched month weather-wise. We had the two snow weekends and then the Saturday when we had, I don't know, seemed like four inches of rain, but it was like a torrential downpour on a Saturday. So I know all the shops and restaurants and so on have had a difficult time, but fortunately even though we were 30% down in December, we were increasingly, each month during the fall, we were beating the 2012 numbers and so we ended up the year an overall 13% higher in calendar 2013 than calendar 2012. I would have loved to have seen, you know, better numbers in December and seen where we could have really ended up, but that's what we had to deal with. On the next sheet, you'll see the December figures for groups. Obviously, we had no groups. There were two that were scheduled and they did cancel. We're trying to reschedule them. And then finally, I included in your packet, we had taken a, we implemented a new process to collect all of the information on the official events from the St. Genevieve area, from the various independent committees that coordinate these events and asked anyone to get their information into us by, I think it was actually the middle of November, but we were still getting those in as of the end of December and early January. There are a few that are still out there, but we've spoken to those individuals and asked them to submit their information for us because it just helps us promote their event if we've got the details on it. Things as simple as the date. In our brochure, we have like, you know, the first Saturday in February is always the King's Ball, but that brochure is good for more than one year, so we don't put the date in it. On our website, we have the dates and descriptions of everything, so I wanted the aldermen to have this. You know, if you have friends and family coming in from out of town, obviously tourism is not just about bringing people to St. Genevieve who've never been here before. If you're able to bring more people in to enjoy these events, we certainly hope that you can help us promote this and support it. There's a kind of a fun event on February 7th, the History of Chocolate at the Bull Duke House. This is an event that they have made arrangements for and have planned and it's something completely new and different. It's on a Friday night and they have a representative from the Mars Almond Candy Bar Company coming in and they're going to talk about the history of chocolate. I mean, what greater thing to do and I'm sure there'll be samples involved, so if you have nothing to do on that Friday night, please RSVP back to the Bull Duke House. I'm sure they'd love to have you. And so, there were a couple of other things I wanted to point out recently. Well, at the last meeting, I reported that I was going to be going to the American Bus Association meeting in January and I did just come back from that last week. Myself and a representative from one of the local wineries went to that. We are members of the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Commission at St. Genevieve is collectively. And so as such, we have an opportunity to get information about St. Genevieve out to next year's ABA meeting, which will be hosted in St. Louis. And this is something like 4,000 tour operators and bus owners and so on and so forth from all across the country come into this meeting. And so we are very enthusiastically encouraging the St. Louis CVC to consider us as one of those, you know, before you go to the conference, you can do a sightseeing tour. They're arranging those on the Saturday before the conference starts on Sunday. And so I've put in our bid to have a bus come down, bus or more than one bus, from St. Louis during this ABA conference in January next year so that they can see St. Genevieve and all of her charms and hopefully book more groups to come to St. Genevieve. We are just an hour from St. Louis and there's a lot of bus traffic that goes through St. Louis and they're always looking for something new. They told me that at the conference. It's always about what's new and they always want to have, you know, the newest itinerary and the most interesting things for their patrons to choose from. So I certainly feel like we fit into that category. So I was at that meeting last week. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is that, again, with the bad weather, we've had some rough times transportation-wise obviously, but also river transportation. There've been quite a few days when high winds on the river or ice floes on the river have prevented operation of the ferry. And so the Tourism Advisory Council asks that we, because things can shut down so quickly, like they might be able to run for an hour, two hours, and if things take a worse for the weather, they have to shut it down. So we have implemented a new system and working with ferry operators, they're calling us to tell us if it goes up or down during the middle of the day or even over a weekend because currently we have a website that shows people if the ferry's running or not running and if you're not aware of it, it's just www.stgenmodocferry.com. You can get to it from our Visit St. Gene website too. But we also now have the ability and the passwords to be able to go in and change that, so if someone calls me over the weekend and the ferry's gone up or down, I can go in and change it from home or from wherever I am so that we can get the information out there as quickly as possible. We've been doing pretty well with it, especially on our social media sites, but you know, the weather changes everything sometimes. So there's a new system in process for that and certainly we hope that the weather gets better. Does anyone have any questions? And if any of your businesses have not got the new brochure, please stop by any day between nine and five and pick some up.
My son lives in Fort Walton Beach, Florida, and he said he was watching TV one night and all of a sudden here was St. Gene on this program. It just showed St. Gene and what they had to offer and all that and also showed Cat Cat Y'all.
Interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Must have been a rerun or something.
I wanted him to check TV to find out what channel it was, if it was like, I guess like Channel 9 for instance.
Right.
Something like that, I don't know.
I'd love to get it because if we can keep it repeating or even have it on our website. The one that I do know of that's out there and that gets repeated sometimes is RFD TV. They came here and filmed a session during Rural Heritage Days one fall. And so when that repeat hits RFD TV, when they reschedule that, our phone rings off the hook and we get people from all over the country, especially in the South, that come here for Rural Heritage Days as a result of mainly that sort of a thing. If you find out, let me know.
Yeah.
And we have a commercial running in St. Louis right now. This was something that was paid for by the overnight lodging tax, the Tourism Tax Commission. We have a commercial running on Channel 4 in St. Louis, various times per day. I think when it runs, we get 28 commercials in a row within like a week period of time, so it's some in morning drive, noon, and evening drive, or evening news hour, I should say. So you might hear about that. That's something that has been paid for out of our tourism department, so. Yes?
It's going to be a leading question, but could you evaluate or assess the working relationship between the Tourism Advisory Council and the Tourism Tax Commission and the Visitor Center staff?
I'd be happy to. Well, when I came in, I met with them early on at your suggestion and Dick's suggestion and, you know, they told me what they were interested in. I told them what I could do and had developed, you know, sort of a game plan in terms of what I felt were the important things to promote us as a destination and get people here for more overnights, longer stays and just to support our events in general more often. And from the very first meeting, I feel like we had a very positive relationship. I can't say that I've had any struggles of any sort. In fact, there've been times when they've asked me for a proposal on a certain thing and I've given it to them and they've supported everything that we've tried to do so far.
Thank you.
I hope the honeymoon doesn't end anytime soon.
Sandra, thanks for the calendar there. I know this doesn't fall underneath it, but being the president of an organization that the nights are long, we've blown our grounds out for fundraisers and it seems like we have like three fundraisers on the same day and that we don't have anything for like five weeks or something. Is there something that maybe me and you can get our heads together? I would take care of putting the dates down on the calendar, so.
Like community fundraisers so that people, if they're planning a new one, they don't trample on somebody else's?
Because you've got three fundraisers, everybody loses.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that, I'd certainly be willing to help you out with it. We could kind of take the forms that I've come up with for this purpose and maybe, you know, just try you know, just try to, um, gather all that information in one place. Maybe we could even put a separate page out there for fundraisers. I mean, it's not tourism per se, but it certainly would be a good service, um, and a certain, a service to those people who are trying to plan fundraisers so that, like you said, they don't want to inadvertently step on anyone's toes.
Not, not relative to fundraisers, but to other kinds of events. One of the things we talked about, uh, last week or so is, you know, an event's gonna occur because it happens every year, but the, the, the groups that organize it sometimes don't decide until what we think is the last minute, when they're gonna do it. So getting advanced notice sometimes is hard.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I think everyone's so busy and this was just one of those things that helped them, you know, they had to sit down and think about it and think, okay, is that really the date that we're gonna do it? Um, and, and actually commit to it on paper. So maybe that's why it took a while for the forms to come in because it's hard to commit to that, but it did get people thinking a little bit sooner.
Okay, thank you.
All right, get in touch and I'll be happy to help you with that.
Thanks, Sandra.
Thank you.
Eric.
Is there a new man there? Is he, uh, when does he go full-time or always go anywhere?
Uh, he's, he's full-time now. Uh, he's during, he's doing his field training program. It's a twelve-week program. Um, my understanding is he has every intention of moving to town, he and his wife. Um, so hopefully in twelve weeks or so, he'll be, he'll be out on his own. Um, I had one revision to the, uh, to the staff report regarding Officer Fisher. Uh, he did come in yesterday and, uh, tendered resignation for, uh, the end of February when his, uh, family medical leave expires. Certainly, uh, as pleasant an encounter as it could have been under the circumstances, uh, you know, he certainly appreciates this board's support and, and the city's support of his employment and, uh, you know, I assured him that, that the door would be open should his circumstances change in the future, so, um, we're sure, sure sorry to see him go and, and we all wish him the best, so...
So he had to fill that position, right?
Correct, yes. Um, and also I got a notification and I'm sure the fire chief may touch on this also, uh, that we are under a fire weather warning, um, due to the low humidity and high winds and, I guess, a red warning for tomorrow. Uh, so I know, uh, open burning has been a question in, in the past, at least with us, we've received some calls about some open burning questions. Uh, you know, we certainly urge everybody to not try to, try to burn anything even with a permit for the next couple of days during these conditions.
Our open burning trade is over now.
Yeah, it is, it is over, but we're still issuing the permits.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, guys.
Steve.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Bill. Uh, a couple of things here. You notice in the report, there are zero residential meters left in the system to be changed. They were all changed out before the end of, uh, end of last year. Um, the guys worked hard through cold weather and rain and snow, but they got them all changed out.
Steve, you say there's twenty-four vacant locations?
Yes.
Are those changed out, too?
Uh, there's no, there's no meter installed in them.
Oh, okay.
Uh, staffs went around and, and they have installed shut-off valves, so they're fully capable and ready to take a meter.
Do we have many meters left?
Yes, there are roughly fifty.
Okay, great. I guess the, the bigger ones that aren't changed out is, I guess that's going on for a number of days, you still, you shoot them manually?
Yeah, the, those, the ones that aren't changed out yet, the six-two inch and the one inch and a half, uh, they're from businesses that, um, you know, some of the, some of the restaurants in town, it's kind of hard to get those shut down during the week. We do have scheduled times to change those out. Um, and, you know, they'll be, they'll be changed out as soon as, uh, available.
Do we have the meters?
Yes.
Okay.
Another thing is, um, last month there were sixty-two disconnects for non-payment. That's, uh, that's double our normal, our normal disconnect count. In turn, that, that adds, you know, thirty, thirty-five work orders, you know, so staff was very busy with that. Yeah. Uh, the last two pages of my reports, the, uh, the water loss for the year, um, current, we'll start off this one. Currently this year, we're at sixteen point seven percent water loss. That's unaccounted water loss through, uh, small leaks in the ground, unmetered buildings, slowly, slowly getting it down. On the last page, if you look at that, in two thousand nine, we had thirty-eight percent water loss. Um, in two thousand ten, you had thirty-one. Two thousand eleven, you had twenty-four percent. Two thousand twelve, you had twenty. Two thousand thirteen, we had nineteen percent. And, and this year, we are down to the sixteen point seven.
As we've discussed in the past, the lower it goes, the harder it is to get it to go any lower.
That's correct. Um, you know, a lot of this is metering unmetered buildings, um, you know, small leaks, leaks that have just surfaced, the meter changeout program, uh, everything, everything is added up and the water loss continues to drop.
How's the water line total now with this cold temperature?
The water lines...
More coming along, it looks like, too.
Typically, we don't have, uh, have many breaks while it stays cold. It's, uh, it's when the thaw comes.
Okay. It seems like that's every other day, but it goes up and down.
But no, we, we haven't had a, uh, we haven't had a main break since December 2nd.
Anything else for Steve? All right, thanks, Steve. Dave, you back there?
Yeah, I'm back. Good evening. How's everybody? It's a speechy. As you see on my report, what we've been doing, uh, mostly working around the contractors down there to shed, trying to get it back in order. Once this last contractor's done, then, then we can, uh, get it, uh, all straightened up and make it look presentable again.
Anyone who hasn't been there since we've kind of finished the interior, uh, ought to go by and take a look. It's, it's remarkable.
Oh, give me another week, please.
Oh, give me another week.
Like you say, we're still working around the contractors. Uh, you know, I have a question. I've got something I'd like to say. Uh, I said we could fix, uh, point base. We can't fix that. This is, this freezing and thawing, it just tore that other side up and I think we're just gonna waste money trying to patch it. I mean, it's, that's that crayfish mud under there. We put that rock in and we had it compacted and after it rained, it just, it's real spongy. That's why we got the barricades up yet. But that other side is really tearing up. And I've already went through a hundred and sixty bags of asphalt already and that's more, but once it freezes and thaws quits, you know, we're gonna end up with a lot more, so... And I haven't did, uh, you know, the audit on the streets yet because of that. I'm waiting for, after, you know, when it gets a little spring where, where we can get out there and check them all out because if I do it now, it's gonna change in, in another week or two.
So Dave, you saying what, a hundred, two hundred feet of point base, both sides of it are gonna need to be replaced?
I'd say the, uh, I'd go all the way from, uh, Parkwood to Oakwood. Cause when we, we dug that section up, there was sections that was eight inches, uh, thick and there were sections that was two inches thick. So that's why that asphalt, or that concrete's just breaking up and this weather's really tearing it up.
Or from Oakwood to where the new stuff starts?
Yeah, to the new stuff there. I mean, it's just, you know, the streets are getting worse and this, this weather's, you know, that's gonna have a toll on it, so...
Yeah.
But I would suggest that you'd look at that one pretty heavy because it's, it's pretty high traffic and it's, it's, it's rough. Every time we put asphalt in, it pops right back out, so the concrete is just, it's just crumbled.
We were trying to compact it and then come in a little smaller, settling it some more.
Yeah, it's just, you know, that old crayfish mud, that old gray look stuff and it just, if it gets wet, it's real spongy. So that's gonna have to dug out and base put in under it.
So was there none of the correct base put into that to begin with?
No, it's all dirt.
One new base, right?
No, they poured it on top of dirt.
Yeah.
If you pour eight inches of concrete uniformly on adequate subgrade, that's okay, but if you don't have adequate subgrade, which kind of sounds like what was going on here, and you have from two to eight inches, I mean...
But that is thirty, forty years old?
Uh, you ever bit of that, you know?
Seventies, probably.
Yeah.
Early seventies.
Let's go, I mean, you might want to pass by there and look at it, but it's, it's in really bad shape. It's a lot worse when we cut that section out. And on the other note, uh...
Dave, what about, uh, Parkwood?
Parkwood, yeah, it's... I didn't want to shock you too bad, but yeah...
I talked to a resident in that area and I threw it through there.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's actually, I think we might be able to pull some of that middle out that's bad, but like I say, what we do is we're gonna be wasting money because contractors are gonna come in and rip it back out anyway if we have contracted out.
Well, you were talking about using our screed and doing a lot of the work ourselves and as you're now saying, that it's not practical on...
No.
On, on, on point base.
On point base drive.
How about sections of parkwood?
I think on Parkwood, we could, we could possibly get by with that for, for a few years, but, I mean, it depends on the rest of the winter, see what's, that'll tell us, so...
But you think it's, it's possible that we could, with our own...
Yeah, we could patch it.
...resources, do some of the worst sections of, of Parkwood?
I can't, I mean, I can't see spending ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollars over on, uh, point base drive and then the rest of it falls apart, then for them, for a contractor to come in and do it, they'd have to rip that out what we did anyway, so, you know, get the crown in the road. And on another note, uh, roughly, we're doing all the figure with the salt, the calcium chloride and the sand, we're about, uh, we're right at twenty-two thousand dollars over budget right now. And I don't think winter's over. I've got about a hundred and twenty-five tons of salt right now. That'll get me through, depends on how, you know, if we get another ten or twelve inches, that, that's not gonna last, but I'd say about two good snows and I'll be out of salt.
Dave, I've got a couple of questions for you. When you do your snow removal downtown, why come they don't block the streets off for traffic not to be able to impede the work? I know they were down in front of the Herald here, the last big snow storm, Bruce was on the back hole and the dump truck was between the candle shop and the courthouse.
Oh, that was, uh, Bowman's. Uh, we contracted it out to Bowman's.
But couldn't you close the street there? I mean, they finally stopped and three or four of us cars that already were committed to go through to, to the post office or whatever, seemed like we'd slow you, them down.
Well, whenever we talked to the Bowman's about that, they said, you know, that they would work around trying to get traffic to go through to keep from blocking it off. So, I mean, they, that's kind of what they wanted to do, so, I mean, if, God forbid, if it ever happens again, we, we can close it, but...
Just so they get it done faster. I don't know if they charge by the hour or what, but...
Yeah, I suspect they, they thought that's what we would have wanted. I don't know. If we had offered to close it, I think they probably would have been happy to accept that.
You know, next time, we can, you know...
And then these cars in the snow route that are being, going around, is that the snowplow drivers', um, problem to report that to the cops or is that the cops look, go out and run those snow routes? I know there was a car on Market Street that was there the whole time and they went around it and...
It's...
I mean, it's not my ward, but...
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we can't get out of the trucks and go stop, so we just go...
Can you get the license plate number or who do you, is that the police or...
Uh, me and Eric can get together and talk and see.
Wouldn't that just be a courtesy? Can you move your car? Not, here's your ticket, we're towing it.
But I, like I, you know, we, we don't have time to get out and do that, so we figured if, you know, they gotta hear us go by. If they don't get by, then, you know, sorry if we bury them, but, you know, we don't do it intentionally, but, you know, to me, I'd, if I heard it, I'd get out and move my vehicle so I wouldn't have to shovel.
It just seemed like if you got a snow round there, they should get it off the street.
Donny, your, your point wasn't it being buried. Your point was it should be off of the pole.
Yeah, it should have been towed or, you know, it was in a snow removal street. And something else on point base subdivision there behind Brookdale, where they got that ditch or drainage.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, maybe it's Martin, they, I think, these may have put up some stakes and they, um, orange netting around it. Is that something that you're gonna work on in the summer or...
Martin, you wanna answer that one?
We have like three sinkholes that have developed in that area, in the, in the, in the drainage basin that the, that the city owns. Um, the procedure, we haven't adopted a sinkhole repair procedure. There are standards that we could adopt. It's about a ten thousand dollar fix and we haven't budgeted for sinkhole repair, so we've been trying to keep them marked, make sure that people are aware they're there so nobody inadvertently goes into it. But, you know, we need to, to, if we're gonna fund it, we need to come up with, per sinkhole, uh, it's hard to tell, but you don't have deep you have to go to get to the...
Right, right.
But, but it's something in that order of magnitude to, to fix the larger, largest of those sinkholes.
Some of the homeowners just sort of look kind of tacky there with the...
Yeah.
...netting around there.
I agree.
If it's my property, I feel the same way, but maybe we need, like you said, to look in the budget and not...
Yeah.
Put down the road, uh...
It's something we need to address because, you know, we're having, it's just, we're struggling with fixing the roads and every ten thousand dollars you take to fix a sinkhole is a road you don't fix and it's just priority setting.
And next thing, Donny, I, I feel it's unsafe for, for our, our guys to go down there with the back hole because we don't know how big that hole is.
Yeah, I didn't walk down. I walked in the backyard and seen the netting.
I wouldn't walk down there.
But I didn't walk down and see how deep or, okay, I think you weren't wrong.
Well, I did. And you can't see the bottom, so I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, on the snow removal, like on the one-way streets is what I noticed. I know it's hard because people park, you know, there's very limited parking anyway, but if they could just step there long enough, you'd like to go down both sides and get that because then it's packed, so compacted to the sidewalk, they're parking halfway out in the street, you can hardly get through them. And I saw that was really the big problem. I realized that a lot of snow, though.
Well, yeah, yeah. Well, actually, I spend most of my time doing the downtown, trying to, trying to move, get it cleared and it's just like, say, where'd I go with it? You know, you know...
And maybe too, when there's, I realize that if there's cars parked on there, it's one way to get in with, very limited getting through there. And when you have to, some way we can, like, have nobody park on this block for just long enough for you to get through there and...
It's no, don't park on that street.
Dave, one thing that I thought of, maybe...
What cities have problems?
I don't know how well it would work on those streets, um, and I don't know how far you can push, but, um, if we could get agreements from the, either property, from the property owners there, that if they had an alley or a driveway, um, that if they didn't care that it got filled up with snow, I don't know how much you could, to keep it out of the parking areas, how much you could push into those areas. And so what if it stays there for a couple of weeks? It might block that alley or block that person's driveway, but at least it would give you a place to go with it. And I don't know if that's practical on your end or not be able to push it to those if they were...
I'd almost have to have a, a loader or something down there to do it that way because you wouldn't be able to do it with, uh, with a truck. Then again, I don't know if you'd want that next to your building, you know, for a couple of weeks and, I mean, what if it gets down to the foundation, your basement or whatever? I mean, I, that's something to think of, too. Good job.
Do we need to maybe look into more salt?
Mm-hmm.
Buying some more? Is there some available yet?
Uh, I can make a phone call tomorrow. I got my six loads in, but like I said, if we get more, I'm, I'm gonna need more, so...
I mean, they said a lot of snow in March.
Yeah.
Our original suppliers, and I know they couldn't deliver timely, but they were, said they had some salt coming in. Is it possible they'll, they'll get that salt in?
No, he said, our supplier, he doesn't know when he's gonna get it in. That was the other one from Kansas City or whatever. But they said that they got a four-week waiting, but they don't want to take on new clients, so...
I mean, it's just gonna get higher, the salt.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. We've paid a hundred and fifty dollars a ton already. I mean, it's up to you guys. You give me the permission, I'll earn some more tomorrow.
Well, we need to be prepared.
You have to buy and use it, they hire prices.
Well, that's true, too.
And worst part about it, last year, we had money left over in the budget and, you know, my stockpile was full, so I didn't really have room to store it, so...
I guess the only thing you look at is, what if you got too much? What if you can't get any at all down the road? I mean, I don't know.
You tell me and I'll make a phone call tomorrow.
We'll discuss it in the morning.
Okay, okay.
Keep them on the table, so we're as close as possible.
There you go.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
And Nick. Mayor, board? I think you have my report in front of you and I think I can resound the sentiments everybody else has put forth here as far as the weather being very treacherous. And fortunately, we've just been running some minor stuff. Every time we have the freezing thaws, we get the alarm calls where the sprinklers are broken and things of that nature. And of course, they're all froze up again, so everything has been fairly minor. Like to talk about that red flag warning. What this is, is even though it's winter time and we have, we've had some snow, we've had some moisture, but the weather conditions are such that even with the wind that we have, the grasses will dry out on that very top layer of that grass. And what that is with the wind, when the wind can pick up and that stuff can get ignited, it can, it can travel and it can travel fast and it can travel far. With the weather as it is and as cold as it is, it might be tough to force myself to put out those fires without warming your hands a little bit on that first. But anyway, those can be a little bit treacherous, so that's what the red flag warning is, is that the weather conditions can cause that stuff to spread fairly rapidly. So we urge everyone to use some caution there. In addition to the weather and one major response we just had, we assisted the Ozora Fire Department with an incident on Interstate 55 that was pretty substantial. A poor gentleman rolled his tractor trailer and it seriously took a team effort with five fire departments to get him out. It took us two hours to do that. And it was seriously a good team effort with the response for all those fire departments and the equipment that we have countywide to make that incident happen and get him out. And I wish him the best of luck in his recovery, so with that all...
Was that Tuesday?
Pardon me?
Was that Tuesday?
Yeah, mhm, right. So with that all, answering questions.
Somebody told me today that they're building a new firehouse over there on Old, that's gonna, I guess, be a combination of wine...
Oh, yeah, what, yeah, what has transpired there is the Lake Forest Fire Department is, has merged with the, with the Wine Garden Fire Department.
Wine Garden? I thought Rocky Ridge was...
Right. Wine Garden has the Rocky Ridge coverage area.
Okay.
So basically, Wine Garden has absorbed the equipment and some of the people with the Lake Forest Fire Department. And don't crack, don't hold me to this, but I think that was in the deal that, I think there was some property provided there to build another station in that area. So, yeah, I believe that is correct. Another Wine Garden station.
Oh, okay.
It'd be considered a wine...
It's not like farming on this street, but...
No, 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 no. Basically...
Different ones joining together.
Yeah, basically, the Lake Forest Fire Department and the Lake Forest, Lake Development did those legal, legal things that they need to do to join those two departments into one. They're gonna be under the Wine Garden jurisdiction, from what I understand. And it'll be just another house for Wine Garden.
Okay, but still have the other one open?
The other Wine Garden house, yes, right, right. Yes, to be, to be an additional house, right.
Oh, mhm, right.
Mhm. Thanks, Matt. House committee reports. Minutes of January the ninth.
Moved approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And a financial report for December.
Moved approved.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2014-08, a resolution authorizing the following list of miscellaneous items to be declared surplus property and providing further authority.
Moved through. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Old Business, Bill Number 3960, second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 395 of the Saint Genevieve Code of Ordinance.
Motion taken.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Zerwick, yes. Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brookfield?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3960 now becomes Ordinance 3900.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 3961, second reading.
Take a motion to a court.
Thank you.
I think, sorry.
An ordinance amending Schedule 4 snow routes of the Saint Genevieve Municipal Code.
Okay. Talk to her.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Brookfield?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwick?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3961 now becomes Ordinance 3901.
And before you move on, I think the burden now is on the staff to make sure that we publicize the snow routes before the snow season hits and we continue to publicize them during the snow season so that people are aware that they shouldn't be parking their cars on these streets during inclement weather. And frankly, until this year, we really hadn't done that.
Right, maybe she was gone to or in the hospital or something, I don't know.
So what's the protocol, though? I mean, are...
For the ordinance?
Is a city officer gonna go through and just say, if they're calling for a foot of snow tonight, are they gonna go earlier in the evening? Ain't gonna wait till we get six inches to start deciding to do something, right?
Yeah, I think we could, I think when we know or have suspicion, that we could put some caution...
At least that's them to move them.
Yeah, and it's hard to figure out where people are. We can put, and we put some caution things under the windshield to start with. You know, but ultimately, at some point, you have to make the decision when you're going to remove it without the permission of the property owner. And that's difficult, I mean, nobody wants to do that.
Is that on Channel 7? Does Channel 7 show the snow routes?
Yes, yes.
They're marked with signs.
Yeah, I just think we need to, you know, signs have been there a long time and it's become part of the landscape. People don't pay attention to them anymore.
Once while, we need to talk to them. Need to enforce it, yeah.
Yeah, just need to remind them.
Remind them, yeah.
Okay, New Business, Bill Number 3962, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Saint Genevieve and the Saint Genevieve Community Access Television Board, Channel 798.
Motion taken.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. So, is this the same as the last year?
It's the same in the amount we budgeted.
Okay.
It's the exact same.
There you go. That's all I needed to know.
Paid out quarterly.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, all in favor of first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, to the public comments section, anybody like to address the board? Yes, sir, Jim?
Thanks for having me. I basically just have one question.
Just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Bell.
And your address.
And 10793 from Malika in Saint Genevieve. Sorry, first time speaking.
That's...
Maybe not the last. Anyway, I have just one question for the board, but I'm gonna say it at the end, okay? Basically, my situation, and I'm pretty sure everybody here is aware of why I'm here, and it sounds like maybe I should have been here last, last meeting, but I was unable to attend. Basically, Jerry and I, we own a few buildings and some houses in Saint Genevieve. Now, we own houses and buildings in several different locations, but we own a few here in town. Not a whole bunch, but a few. Our goal was to kind of do our part, kind of fix up the city, take some abandoned places, make them nice enough that people want to live and maybe want to rent from us, you know? And in turn, turn a profit, because we're not gonna do it for free. We got families, right? And in turn, we go out and we solicit business and we bring people into town. Because I understand that we need tax revenue, obviously, point base needs a new parking lot, right? We need tax money, it's obvious. But every time we send people down, that every time, at least the last two times, I know for certain, and this has probably happened several times before that we're just not aware of, at least the last two times, we've sent people down to City Hall to get approval to set their business up in this town, they've been run off. Now, my problem is this. This is money directly out of my pocket. This is money out of the city's potential tax revenue. Now, if it's not important enough to you guys to bring this, let these businesses set up, then we'll quit, we'll quit. We won't try to bring new businesses into town. Point in case. We send this gentleman down here, oh, what, seven, eight, nine weeks ago? Sad, I don't know.
I'd like to share it if I can.
Sure.
Be mine, I'm Sherman Chapel. I live in Bloomsdale. And I'm starting a small manufacturing company to manufacture vehicle safes. They go in your console between the seats. I talked to Glenn Boyer three days ago. In Jefferson County, the last two months, they've had cars broken into and lost 105 weapons. That's a serious thing. Last year, there were 1,200,000 snatch and grabs. They break the glass, steal the stuff, one and a half billion dollars in losses. Now, I bought about $40,000 worth of equipment to put into a facility. I came down to your place, I think the lady's name is Agrinda, came down, spoke with her, and she says, well, I don't think that's, we're gonna have to get a study. And then she said, I said, why would that be? Because what it's doing is a commercial zone. So she says, this is on a Tuesday. She would get back with me yet that afternoon. I called back the following Wednesday or Thursday, and I think I spoke with this young lady and told her at this point, I no longer needed her assistance because I'm not gonna set up in Saint Genevieve. I went to Saint Louis and I talked to Mayor Slay. Hello. I got to talk to nine different opportunities that have incubators. I don't know if you've got an incubator here or not. If you do, nobody said anything, it would be a good idea. Seventy to eighty percent of employment in this country is small business, 50 or less employees. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but when you put them together, it becomes a lot of money. My job, I'm looking at employing six to 10 people by the end of the next 12 months at an income of 30 to 40,000 dollars apiece, which I think is probably a little higher than the average new job you're starting in this, in this community. I'm just sharing with you, from the outside, this is how I see it. And I'm not too sure, you might not see other people seeing it the same way. I've been living here 14 years. I came from Chesterfield. And I just think you are missing a boat if somebody doesn't wake up and try to communicate effectively. You're not gonna get 500 people jobs. The skill set's not here. But you can get a lot of folks that could be 40 or 50 people over a period of time. It's a lot better for you than if you get the big ones and they walk out. That's all I've got to say. I'm sorry that, it was really personal to me. I'm sorry to say that, but it really was, because I'm investing probably a hundred thousand dollars to make something happen. And all I need is somebody to work with me on it. I wound up getting a building. Unfortunately, it wasn't in the city of Saint Genevieve, okay? Thank you.
That's fine, that's fine. So my point is this, the gentleman just needed a phone call back. A two-minute phone call, hey, I'm sorry, we don't have your information, give me another day. I probably could have had a tenant. Now, I have an empty building that's costing me money. I pay taxes and insurance on. And this is not the first time. And I understand at the last meeting, there were several other people that had the same issue. So here's my question. My question is, why is it so hard to set up a business in Saint Genevieve? It shouldn't take, it's not, it's not a big deal. Let's get these people in, let's set them up, we can all make money here. Now, with that being said, I have two, I have two options here. There are two different plans here. Plan A, I have no control over. You guys can fix the problem or you cannot fix the problem. It's completely up to you. Plan B is, I can control this completely. I don't have to do business in Saint Genevieve. So with that being said, everything I have is for sale. We'll do business in towns that will help us out. And there are towns out there, we're working with them right now, that are happy to have us. I would love to do business in Saint Genevieve, but unless something changes, we're done, we're leaving too. That's all I have to say. Yes, sir?
The building you're talking about, how was it zoned? I mean, or you're paying a...
It's commercial.
Commercial? I said it's the Kisses Building. I don't understand Kisses Building. If I buy a commercial building, I'm paying more money and I shouldn't have to go through all this red tape.
That was one reason we bought a commercial building, so we could put commercial businesses in it. A commercial business comes in and says, hey, can I put my commercial business in it? And they don't get an answer, they get a no. It's like me coming into your house and taking a thousand dollars a month out of your pocket. That would upset you. That's what I'm losing. I'm losing at the very minimum a thousand dollars a month. I can't operate, I'm not, I'm not wealthy. I can't afford to lose that type of money. I mean, I'm doing my part. I expect you guys to do your part, too. That's all I'm really asking. That's all anybody's asking. Let's help these people. Let's, if somebody's working nine to five, I go in and I hope they're there nine to five. I mean, that's the person that's gonna give me my answer, I'm just asking for an answer. I don't care what the answer is. Tell me what I gotta do, I'll do it. I don't care how hard the answer is, I will do my part to get those people in there. And they will too, or they won't rent from me. And that's just how it is. But all I want's an answer. And I don't think I'm asking too much for that, nobody else is either. It shouldn't take four and a half months to set up a business. But what's a guy do? He comes in, loses his job, he wants to set up a business, it takes him four and a half months to set up a business? What's he do for four and a half months for income? I mean, that's, that's ridiculous.
Guy at Kisses Dodge, taking four and a half months to try to get anything done.
Unfortunately, he had a job, so he was able to support his family. But when I started this, when we started this, I was unemployed. And if I relied on this to, to feed my family, we, I would have been out on the street. I was lucky enough to have income aside from this. But I could have been out on the street because running people off. I mean, I don't understand what the problem is. And I'm sorry, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not calling anybody out, I'm just asking that. I, I have a job to do and I do it, and if I don't, I get fired. We all know what the problem is, we know what the solution is. That's all I'm asking.
The only thing you will do yet, I know who your business partner, can you tell, if the public doesn't know who Jerry is?
Jerry Bowman, who lives over in, uh, Valley Springs.
Jim, I know, I, I know you just made everybody aware of what happened between Sherman and, and why he took his business to St. Louis. Didn't you have another?
I did.
Person that wanted to come in?
That one, that one kind of blows me away, too, because originally, this building had a hair salon in the front. It was a hair salon. For some reason, the day we bought it, she even packed up and went up the street, which is fine. We had a heating and cooling place, wanted to make it into an office. So what we did was we painted the walls, we put a desk in the middle of the room. That was it. We didn't change a single thing, took hair dryers out. They rented the place for about a year or so, and they left. Had another hair salon, wanted to put in, changed business. I don't know what the painting of the walls had to do with anything. I could move the desk out. I don't understand the change of business issue. I don't, I don't know the whole story on that, because I can't, I can't get a hold of these people anymore. Like I said, I sent five or six people down for licenses and they just disappeared. I've not heard back from them. I just saw that they didn't want to rent from me, but now I'm starting to think, uh, there's something else was into it. So I don't know how much. I, I say $1,000 a month, it could be more than that, I don't know. All I know is I have a completely empty building. I could have four tenants in it and I have zero people. I pay the mortgage on it each month, pay the insurance, and I can't get anybody in it.
Because of red tape?
Because, and I don't think it's red tape. This last one was a phone call. Phone calls are cheap. And, and I just want, then I made a phone call in, and I, and I, and I left a message, and, and, and the message is probably still in the machine. Hey, did you guys try to call him back and try to maybe pull him back in? Could you please give me a call back? That was four weeks ago. I have not gotten a phone call back. I think AT&T's free both ways, if it's AT&T. I mean, I don't know what the big deal is. Just. Help me, help you, help you, help me, I don't know, whatever it takes. I mean, I'll do it. But I just need to know what it takes. If anybody wants, wants to talk to me about it afterwards, I'm fine, then you can call me. I don't care. Give me my phone number. Any other questions?
Hey, uh, anyone else want to address the board? Okay, under other business, uh, we have the St. Genevieve Community Center requesting a road closer. Closure for Progress Parkway for their annual 5K run on February the 8th.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business? Okay, motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.